All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two, six P. M. Hearing of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Robert Tatro. I am the chair, and I am calling the meeting to order. Uh, before we begin this evening, if anyone has any electronic devices, if you could turn them down to a silent or mute, uh, or at least all bringers off, please. And if anybody is recording, if you could please declare so. Is anyone recording the meeting this evening? You certainly can. You just have to declare it, that's all. Okay, hearing none, seeing none will continue. So please allow me to read my script. Um, we're going to confirm member access first. So this open meeting of the Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals is being operated as a hybrid format under chapter one oh seven of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two. The public can join the meeting remotely by dial one, six, four, six, seven, four, nine, three, one, one, two, and entering the access code nine, four, four, five, seven, one, three, four, nine. Or joined by computer by visiting, uh, global go-to-meeting.com. And when you log into that, you'll see there's a box in the upper right corner asking for you to join, and you can in, uh, enter nine, four, four, five, seven, one, three, four, nine. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As a preliminary member, my name is Robert Tatro. I am the chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda participated remotely are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Uh, Vice Chairman Marin?
Present.
Mr. Cussy?
Present.
Mr. Chacolo?
Present.
Uh, Ms. Roach?
Present.
I was informed that Ms. Bush would not be attending this evening. Uh, and I believe Mr. Garabedian is going to be with us, uh, via, um, uh, remote. Is that correct, Mr. Garabedian?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So that's who we have with us this evening. Town officials and employees participating. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Caleb Moody?
Here.
Tim Pratt?
Here.
Uh, are there any other town employees that are here this evening that would like to identify themselves for the purpose of the meeting? Again, hearing none, seeing none. Please note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Um, state, please note that also this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television and will be available for, um, reviewing, uh, on the YouTube channel. If there are applicants participating remotely, uh, please state your name and address as if you were attending in person when I, uh, introduce you, please. Um, so with that being said, do I have a motion to open the six o'clock P. M. Hearing, applicant Sparhawk Realty LLC requesting a special permit under section nine point three point five, three point two point, two point two, and three, two, two, three of the Auburn zoning bylaw for construction of a multifamily house located at four oh four Oxford Street North, map forty, parcel zero eight two. This is a continuation from ten, twenty, twenty-two. Uh, I have reviewed all of the information, and I have signed the Mullen Rule and submitted that to the, uh, building inspector for the record. So we're going to go ahead and begin this hearing. Um, and get everybody caught up to speed, if we could. So do I have a motion to open the six P. M. Hearing?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I don't believe we need a motion to open, sir, because there are--
This is a continue. Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate that point of order. Uh, okay, so is the, um, applicant present either via our, uh, Zoom type call or here with us?
Good evening, uh, by the way.
Yeah.
Good evening, son of a brood, uh, here on the app, and I believe, uh, if you turn, uh, from lecture to lecture, it's kind of, uh, doing a little.
Okay, so if you want to go ahead and set up by the lectern, um, I can turn it over very briefly to Mr. Broder, and if he, do you want to add anything, sir, before, uh, we allow him to begin the presentation?
I think he wanted to address the couple of comments, and then if, uh, if the board needed some refresher from the last meeting, certainly do that.
Evening, sir.
You're gonna have to speak into the microphone.
Okay.
I have a member remotely, so he won't be able to hear you.
Right.
Right, I believe, uh, Mr. Broder wanted to address, uh, the board initially, and then if, uh, if you guys needed any more refresher on the project or anything else, then I would address those comments.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Attorney Broder, sir, good evening. How are you?
I'm well, thanks. Sorry, I'm doing a little cold going on, eh?
That's okay. Uh, you are coming in broken up a little bit, so I might have a little difficulty recording, so, um, I just wanted to make you aware of that. Um, I'm going to go ahead and try to yield the floor to you, and hopefully this thing goes through. Um, and, uh, you can, you can address the certain issues that you may have already tried to address previously. So go ahead, sir. The floor is to you.
Sure. This connection a little bit, sir?
Uh, so far, so good.
Okay, so there were a few things, just a little off for, uh, Zoom here. But the, the first issue, uh, you know, I know Kate made a con--
Hold on a second. I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt you, but again, you're coming in broken up, so we're not going to really get your full response and have it recorded. Is there any place you can move to get into, or?
Well, I'm just gonna call in.
Or maybe you could just call in directly on the phone? Just a straight phone call without the audio, without the video?
I'll, I'll give that a shot.
Okay. Uh, and in the meantime, if you would like, since we have the hearing continuing now, um, do you want to just go ahead and get us all up to speed, who are sitting here in the room and--
Sure.
Uh, the folks who are at home?
Sure. So, uh--
Again, you're gonna have to speak into the microphone. Do we have a member remotely?
So I can point out things here.
That's okay. Uh, we adjust to it accordingly.
Yep. So this, this property is located at four oh four Oxford Street, directly across from the Horgan Arena. This is the Horgan Arena here. Uh, it's two point two acres. Uh, there had been an original, uh, house and garage, um, that was demoed in two thousand and seventeen. Um, the project was approved by the Commission, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, and ZB A back in two thousand and sixteen and seventeen for site plan, special permit. Um, unfortunately, the only work that was completed was the demolition of the existing house and garage, and then the permits lapsed. So the applicant Sparhawk, uh, is looking to re-permit the project, uh, essentially as it was in two thousand and sixteen and seventeen, which is, uh, multifamily, two buildings, one with four units and one with two. Um, with this last filing, uh, during the, we do have the order conditions. The Conservation Commission just issued that in October. And then with Planning Board, uh, the new peer reviewer Graves Engineering had requested that the driveways in front of the units be extended from the previously approved eighteen and a half feet to twenty-one feet. And additionally, the fire department had requested, uh, a no parking painted zone along this side of the pavement. And it was also requested we show a turnout off the driveway, which was added. So those were the change, only changes. Those were completed, and the planning board and Graves, uh, approved, and the planning board issued their, uh, site plan application in October as well. So we have Conservation and, uh, Planning Board, and then we did, uh, file, obviously, to go through the process with you guys. Um, and in October, um, we presented the, the project, and we did at, at that time receive, uh, um, it was presented that there was a comment from the building inspector, um, about some other item on, for a different project, uh, that is owned by the same applicant. Um, and that's, we, we, that was the thing to be addressed in between this period, and that's why we have the continuation to now, so. Um, other than that, the project is, is what you saw in two thousand and sixteen, except for the minor change to the driveway and the, the parking, uh, striping, so. We do have the other two permits, uh, and we're just wrapping up with you guys.
Okay.
I think Mr. Broder had spoken to the building inspector, uh, to address some of those comments, and that's what he was going to, uh, discuss with you tonight.
Excellent. So I believe Mr. Broder has been able to re-contact with us again. Uh, are you with us, Attorney Broder?
I hope so. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Okay, so--
All right, great.
Your colleague here at the Town Hall did a pretty good job of getting us up to speed, uh, and all the applicant, uh, the, uh, people present here and for the folks at home. So everybody is up to speed on where the project, uh, is currently. Uh, do you want to address, um, the certain issues you may have had in the past, sir? Go ahead.
Yeah, just the, the, the issue from Caleb, and and then the condition to discuss with you about transferability.
Okay, um, I just want to remind them--
I'm having a little bit of echoes, so I apologize.
That's okay. So, uh, all the amount, yeah, the, uh, items that were on the, um, previous concerns of the planning board and the different other boards, uh, have all been addressed on the plans. We can see that. And then, um, the issues that Caleb had, that also have been addressed. I can see that. But I just want to, what is the status of the property now? Who owns the property?
Sure, it's owned by Sparhawk Realty, uh, but the property is under agreement to be sold.
Okay, so--
I have, I have spoken with the buyers, and they understand the process that we're going through, and we're wait, there waiting for all of the permits to be approved.
Okay, so we're gonna treat that--
They're gonna purchase the property and do the project as soon as possible.
Okay, so if it's, if it's okay with you, I think the best way to approach this is, uh, sort of a two-pronged approach. We'll deal with the, um, issues concerning the actual permitting process first, uh, and we can sort through all of that, and then, uh, the board can, uh, entertain the possibility of this, whether or not this will be transferable. Uh, we can have some open public discussion about that, if that works for you.
Yep, that's fine.
Excellent, okay. So I just want to remind the board, if you remember, we, uh, approved the permits for this particular parcel back in, I think it was sixteen or seventeen, as they mentioned. It was, uh, McCarthy, I believe, that owned it. Uh, there was going to be, as they said, the multiple units in there, so I'm just making sure we're all refreshed. We did give permits for this particular project first, uh, or previously. I just wanted to make sure I understood that it was completely in a new owner's hands, so to speak, to make sure the board understood that. So you are all aware of that. Uh, anyway, uh, Vice Chairman Marin, I yield the floor to you, sir. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I'd like to take in part, um, what brought us here, um, as a continuance. So Caleb had, um, provided us some, some, essentially, uh, some comments that were shared with the applicant regarding a different project and how that project went. Now, recognizing that they're, they're two different projects and unrelated, uh, Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned that they had been satisfied. Um, I had actually read in the brief that there was, um, an openness on the part of the applicant's attorney to discuss how that they could, they could be rectified. So I'd like to ask, um, Caleb, if in fact that discussion took place and what's been corrected, or how that's been addressed to the previous, and I believe that project was on Jerome Ave. Is that correct?
Correct. The, the current owner had another project on Jerome Ave that wasn't constructed per the approved plan, so that was my comment. Um, I did speak to Attorney Broder about it. He had some ideas about how to condition it so this transferred to the new owner. Um, my suggestion would be, if the applicant was agreeable, would be to just amend the application so that the special permit is issued to the new owner rather than the current owner.
Thank you, and it, and it, respectfully, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. What I, I agree with your comments there, but that's secondary for me. The, the primary was, um, what in fact was done to Jerome Ave to satisfy how that permit was issued? What was corrected?
Nothing has been corrected to date.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, the, the, the initial issue on Jerome Ave was that there were things that took place, and I won't articulate them or waste our time, but there were things that took place that were, were not conforming to the permit that was issued by this applicant. And those, in fact, have not been satisfied.
Okay, so you're, we're, again, but we're talking about, and I just want to be clear for myself--
That's correct. We're talking about this.
We're talking about, hang on, this is, uh, what we're talking about is this application here, but you're bringing up a situation that was from a previous application, correct?
We are bringing up the previous application because it calls into question, and the reason why we put a pause on this and we allowed them to continue because it brought up, whether or not it was intent or not, it brought up what happened with this applicant on a previous project in town, and whether or not he respected that permit, um, enough to comply with what that permit had said. So that hasn't been corrected.
Okay.
Um, and I just want to put that in for the record. And so I understand that there was an offer in the language that I saw that came through that we were provided, um, that the applicant's attorney had offered to discuss what could potentially be remedied. Uh, but as we sit here today, nothing's been done about that. Um, and so my question, and I'll take secondarily the, the point that Caleb had raised, and so, um, it's the, the applicant is Sparhawk. It's not the new owner. Is that correct?
That's correct. The current applicant is Sparc, Sparhawk Realty.
Sparhawk is the, is the applicant. So if we were to issue this permit, we would be issuing it specifically to Sparhawk.
That's correct. And, and also, one of the normal standard conditions that the board usually attaches to special permits is they're issued to, to the person and non-transferable. So that's why Mr. Attorney Broder wanted to discuss that, that standard condition that's usually on the permits.
All right, so, so understanding that point, Mr. Chairman, and I'll, and I'll end and give my board members a chance to jump in. But I'd like to give, um, the applicant's attorney an opportunity to, to essentially discuss his rationale for, for why we should consider waiving that condition on transferability, because we don't transfer ownership, um, between one owner to another, a special permit. So I wanted to give the applicant an opportunity to just essentially state that case of why we should consider that.
Okay, so first of all, I absolutely wasn't challenging. I didn't understand exactly where you were going with it, so I was looking for clarification, so thank you very much, because now I understand where you're going with all this. This wasn't a, a point of, of challenge, so I apologize if it was presented that way.
Mr. Chairman, there's no apology needed.
So I, now I understand what we're going with. Okay, so we have a, a, an issue before the board that the applicant may or may not have completed all of the required terms of a previous application, and whether or not the respected, application will be respected in this term. Okay, understood. So with that being said, um, do you have any concerns about just the application right now, or do you want me to have, uh, Attorney Broder respond now, or would you rather go around to the other board members?
No, that, that was, that would be my one and only question at this time, except to--
I just wanted to be clear, that's all, so--
Yeah, no, thank you. It's actually, yeah, and my, my direct question, uh, to Mr. Broder is, is, is why this board should consider waiving, um, the, um, waiving that condition, um, and allowing this permit to be transferable, okay?
Um, so I think you heard the concern of the vice chair, Attorney Broder, so I'm going to yield the floor to you, sir, if you want to respond. Please do.
Sure. I, I mean, I think the rationale between my, behind my comment to Caleb was if there is a concern about the applicant completing the project as designed, you know, allowing the transfer to the purchaser would essentially assuage that concern. Not going to be Sparhawk Realty developing the project, going to be their buyer.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I appreciate that response. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, reserve any additional comments or questions.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I've spoken quite enough. So I'm gonna give my other board members an opportunity to jump in.
Attorney Broder? You want to add something?
I guess what, I, yeah, what, what I'm, what I'm trying to articulate, I'm sorry, I, I really am struggling with this headfold, so my head isn't quite clear as it usually is. But, you know, this, this project, the, the best thing for this project, in my mind, if there is a concern about the applicant's ability to satisfy the condition, is to allow the transfer to a third party. They're bound by the conditions of the permit. They're bound by the approval of the board and the design plan. To me, that puts the project in the best position to be successful.
Okay, um, I'm gonna move on to Mr. Cussy for a minute, um, and we're gonna allow him to speak, and then we'll decide which course we'll take from there. The floor is yielded to you, sir.
Okay, my question would be if this, uh, supposed to deal falls through and Sparhawk still owns the property, now he can develop it, if it's approved? That's my question, too. I think that would be-- Because he's the one getting the permit.
That's correct. The permit would be issued to him and only be transferable to the proposed buyer, so if the, if the deal fell through, then Sparhawk would still hold the special permit, Sparhawk Realty.
That's my only question.
Mr. Chacolo, to you, sir?
Hi, um, the reason we are here, and we've had this continued, is due to the deficiency at Jerome Ave, and that's still not corrected. But what we're going to do, proposed to do, is add our trust into another project without the first reason we, we are here. And, and by the way, it was under recommendation that we determined that no action should be taken on this permit until that deficiency was cured. Anytime there is a special permit on a property that is sold, that special permit does not go with the property. The owner has to come back in. I see no reason whatsoever to waive that in this particular situation, being that it's very clouded as it is, and that would just muddy the waters even further if indeed we took action on this particular special permit. Because I, for one, do not agree with the transfer to a new owner not adhering to what we do when the new owner comes in. The new owner would still have to come before us. So I, for one, would not be in agreement with transferring a special permit issued now to the current owner of the property, especially because we still have up in the air a discussion between Attorney, Attorney Broder and our enforcement officer of how the issue on Jerome Ave might be cured. We don't even know that yet, but we've put it out there and said, oh, okay, we'll, we'll fix it somehow. I don't agree with it.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
You may.
I just want to caution the board about connecting this, this application to a different property and basing their decision on, on a different property. Um, and I think I would advise the board to rely on their ability to condition this permit as they see fit based on this application and not based on another one. That's all.
Ms. Roach, it's been a while that we and I have had, shared the floor in a meeting together, and I am looking forward to hearing your response on this.
This is, all right. So I, I guess based on the last comments from Mr. Moody, um, I think that he is correct in saying that we cannot base our decision solely on three Jerome. I also think that I can speak for everyone on the board, and I don't take that lightly, by saying we do not reward people who do not follow the rules. So for me, if we think that we need to be careful with muddying the waters on making a decision about another, based on another property, if I was to even consider this, I would only do so uh, under the condition that Jerome be fully rectified before anything happens on this property, period, holds up to sale. Too bad. And very respectfully, you guys have brought on a wonderful attorney, and he's doing his best, but this is a no for me.
Chair, if I can just respond to Ms. Roach's comments, I would just, we want to be very careful about the conditions, and the conditions shouldn't, shouldn't relate to another project. The board does have the ability to put any condition on this project, and, and the non-transferable condition is a standard condition that, that's attached to most special permits. I would just caution about mentioning any other project in any condition on this project or this permit.
What about a timeline condition? Yes, but not based on another projects.
The board does have the ability to condition time or make permits renewable or any of that. The conditions should relate to just this project.
Do we have any of butters present? Do I like to speak regarding this hearing at all? Hearing none, seeing none? Okay, do we have any of butters that have called in that may want to speak on this hearing?
Just want to remind the chair that we had, we do have a member remote, too. I don't know if Mr. Garabedian has any comment.
Right, uh, Mr. Garabedian, are you still with us, sir?
I am still here. Uh, I feel the board's, uh, covered all my comments, though.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Um, so I think most of the comments here, I think, reflect how we all feel about the situation. Can I just ask Caleb, what is the, in a nutshell, what is, what, uh, can you, just for the record, talk about briefly what the issue with the past permit was? Can you, or you would prefer not to?
The, the issue on Jerome Ave is the project was constructed and not constructed per the approved site plan. It, basically, it was paved, the property was paved from property line to property line.
Okay, and how much needs to be removed? I mean, we're talking about weeks' work, days' work, hours' work? That's what I'm really asking, that's all.
It's been a long time since I've seen that plan. I couldn't-- like I said before, I, I caution the board very much about making anything that happens here tonight on this project relative to that project.
And I'm gonna, I, the only reason I'm asking this is because I, I have something I would like to say, but I just want to make sure that I'm covering all the bases and finding all the facts, so to speak, first. So, uh, we don't have any of butters present that really want to speak on the matter. Everybody has discussed. The issue at hand here is the fact that the past permit, and again, the building inspector pretty much clearly says we can't necessarily consider that, per se, although it's obvious that the board, uh, had concerns regarding it. Um, with that being said, I think, um, I'd like to go around one more time, um, and just discuss whether or not this permit would be approved. I'm not asking for a motion at all. All I'm talking about is if this permit were applied using a single applicant as it stood alone, removing all other extemporaneous matter, would this, in your mind, be approved? Because that's how we have to peel the layers of the onion here, I think. I think we have to decide whether or not this would stand and approve as a single applicant. Then we have to decide what we want to do if it's a multiple applicant and how we want to proceed with the permit and not permitting, whichever it may be. But I think they really, I think we have like a answer one and two with a couple of A's and B's underneath those ones and twos. You know what I mean? Like trying to sort this whole thing. So, um, with that being said, um, Attorney Broder, do you have anything else you'd like to add, uh, before I go around with the board again?
Yes, and again, I apologize. It's a little clunky doing this remotely. Um, on, on the transferability piece, you know, the, the, the problem that I have and that I'm trying to approach is a buyer of a project like this is only going to buy this property if all of the permits that they need in order to develop the project are completely in hand. The requirement to have somebody come in after they buy the property, it, it just doesn't dive with the way the business is going to work. The business deal. We, you, you, you need to know that you have all of the permits in hand prior to purchasing the property. You can't finance it without that. You can't do anything with the property, and you're taking a huge risk. So, you know, in my mind, the, the only way to do this is to approve, you know, both Sparhawk Realty and a permitted transfer to the buyer, in this case, GM Properties LLC.
Here's the chair.
Yes.
Attorney Broder, would the applicant be agreeable to amending the application so that the permit was issued to the purchaser?
I believe they would.
I, I think that would solve all the problems and ease the board's concern about the development of the property if, if the applicant requested a minor modification to change the applicant's name from Sparhawk Realty to the proposed buyer's name.
Consider it made.
So through the chair, the applicant has requested a minor modification to change the applicant's name on the application. All the advertisements have been made, nothing has changed on the plan. The board would need to take a vote to consider that a minor modification, then no new advertisements need to be made, and then the board could consider the application with the new applicant's name.
Okay, so for the record, just to make sure, can you confirm, we're talking about a transfer of this application by name from Sparhawk Realty LLC to, and can you add the second applicant for me?
Attorney Broder, can you divulge who the new applicant would be?
Yeah, I put it in the email to you, Caleb, but it's GM Properties LLC.
And their address, please, sir? Or if you have it?
Great question.
That's okay. I was just, you know...
That information, that's clerical, that can be added when the decision's created.
Right, right. I did want to make sure that we're talking about another reputable company. That's all, they actually exist. You know, unfortunately, in these times, we have a lot of real estate scams and different crazy things that go on, so I just want to make sure we're dealing with a real place.
Through the chair, after speaking...
Yeah, they're...
Go ahead, Todd.
Sorry, sorry. They are a real company, and actually, they're a client of mine on another project.
Excellent. That's all I really, I just was concerned, I have not heard of them, with all due respect. I just wanted to make sure that we're dealing with a reputable person that is being, or a company that's being transferred to. So with that being said, I'm going to yield the floor to the vice chair again, sir, if you'd like to unravel some concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is the direction that I intended, understanding this application, that we not move forward, in my view, with Sparhawk, that we move forward with another applicant. And I appreciate Mr. Broder's approach to lay out the risk, but my question is, and maybe I'm just missing it, is that if Mr. Broder's concern was that a buyer wouldn't buy unless the permit was secured, then are we saying that this permit will be issued and only issued to the new applicant's name? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if this purchase does not go through, then Sparhawk has no opportunity to develop this property. Is that correct?
That's correct. Mr. Broder, through the applicant, has requested a change in the name on the application, so this permit would be issued to G, I think, believe it's G and M Properties LLC, and standard conditions would make it non-transferable.
All right, very good. Well, Mr. Chairman, based on that change on the record, I for one think that, based on this property, and I have viewed it, I think the project has merit in the way they want to develop it. And that would satisfy me, removing Sparhawk from being in question on what happened to a different property in a different time.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Mr. Cusi, to you, sir?
No questions, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chacolo, with light of the new information, sir?
Thank you. Would this require, being that one of the issuing bodies of the town was the planning board, and I do not know if the conservation commission weighed in on this because of the water on the property, do those permits, does the applicant have to go before those boards? And the same thing happen with those two boards?
Through the chair.
No, I think, because we're the first hurdle, if we adopted the change and it goes to the applicant, and we strike his name and add the new applicant's name, then that permit, application proceeds forward with our authority behind it, so to speak, that it's, that person...
Any permit issued by us can also be viewed by the planning board.
Correct. Site plan approval, conservation issues, whatever it may be. All we're doing is determining whether or not we agree to the requested change of name of applicant at this current time.
So my question still stands, being that it is a new applicant, a change of applicant, does the new applicant have to appear before those boards?
Through the chair, I can answer that pretty quickly. The conservation goes with the land, not with the applicant. It's attached to the land, and it's recorded, registered deeds, so it's attached to the land. The site plan approval, unless it's conditioned not to transfer, it would transfer with the sale of the property to the new owners.
That's the conservation commission, right?
Conservation goes with the land, site plan approval would also transfer to the new owners unless they conditioned it not to transfer, and I do not believe they did condition it that way.
If I may, on the order of conditions, yes, this happens a lot where someone gets an order of conditions, and they don't build anything for a year, and then they sell it. That, as Caleb pointed out, the order goes with the land. Then when the project's complete, you know, it specifies on your certificate of compliance who the applicant was at the time and who the order was issued to, and who's applying for it, which would be the new owner, but you still have to satisfy all those requirements of the order of conditions.
It's just unusual for us as a board to not have either a sale completed or a single applicant to go through, even if we have multiple issues to untangle with the application or within the application. We generally don't start with untangling the name on the application, so...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, though, it brings up an interesting point, and I'll end on this. Caleb, given that this new applicant, that if we so vote and agree to change the applicant's name and move forward with that, this new applicant, are we comfortable with issuing a permit to an applicant that doesn't own the property? Have we done that?
Through the chair, yes. It's common for prospective buyers to apply for permitting prior to purchasing the land. They'll get, they'll have a P and S in place contingent upon receiving their approvals. So it's a common...
Very good. So, Mr. Chairman, I, for one, based on this direction, I think that we have well-protected the risk that we perceived with the original applicant. And so I would be prepared to make a motion to accept the proposed applicant's name change.
Just through the chair, just to point of clarity, so what the board's going to be required to do is someone's going to need to make a motion that the applicant's request is a minor modification and doesn't require re-advertising, and then they'd have to vote on that, and then they could vote on the actual application.
Okay, so with that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and say that we have...
I just want to quickly point out, I did do a quick search at the Secretary of State's office. GM Properties LLC is a registered corporation in Massachusetts, in good standing with the Commonwealth.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That really does help.
The internet.
Yep, gotta love that World Wide Web, right? So, okay, so we have a lot of new information. So for point of order, the first motion, if somebody would like to have came moving one forward, would be to consider whether or not the request for modification of the application is minor or not. So do I have that motion first?
Before I make that motion, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we close the public portion of the hearing.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chacolo. So Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Mr. Cusi?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
I approve.
And I approve. So the public portion of the hearing is closed, we're not going to have any more comments. The board is going to discuss where it wants to move forward, and that will render a decision. To you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to consider it a minor change in the application before us, to change the applicant's name from Sparhawk to the LLC that's been aforementioned, and that in fact is a minor change to the application.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. So Vice Chair Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Cusi, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote?
I approve.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I'll approve.
I vote to approve. And just for the record, sir, since you're with us, how do you vote, Mr. Garabedian? Even though you're an alternate, I still like to try to get you participating as much as I can, and your vote doesn't really, it's not going to record, but go ahead. Do you agree with what everything was said?
I would vote yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything you want to add? So I think as somebody who's being trained, do you see the process that we start to go through here, and, you know, how we unravel these issues? So I appreciate you kind of hanging in with us and watching what's going on. So with that being said, we have a motion to approve. So we have Vice Chair Maron, we have Mr. Cusi, all of us approved on that one. Remax, stop is, do we have any discussion regarding the individual, the permit itself, now that the name is changed, regarding whether or not this should be approved as it stands in front of us?
Could you clarify what you just said?
So what we did was, we just changed the name on the application.
Right.
So now, now that that's been resolved, what I'd like to do is go back to the original application itself, look at the information that we have before us...
Yep, I got you.
And that was presented, and then determine whether or not we would move forward with this application based on how it stands before us. So I think that's what we need to kind of refocus on.
With the new name.
Yes, please. So Vice Chair Maron, I'll yield the floor to you, sir.
Before I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask one more clarification?
Absolutely.
So Caleb, in the event that this permit is voted and approved, and the sale does not go through, then that special permit is dissolved. Is that correct? Because it stays with the owner that is no longer an owner.
That's correct. If the board applied their standard conditions, it would be issued to GM Properties LLC and be non-transferable.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the applicant with the amended name with standard conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Maron, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mr. Cusi, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
I'll approve.
That was a reluctant approval, it seems.
Ooh.
But still an approval nonetheless. I vote to approve. And Mr. Garabedian, I think you already stated that you would probably approve this project as well, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so do I have a motion to open the public portion of the hearing so we can actually close the hearing? Do we need to address the attorney or the client at all?
I think we're finished, Mr. Chairman, respectfully.
Right, okay, I just want to make sure. I didn't want to miss stuff anyway, at all.
I think we're finished.
All right, okay, so Attorney Broder, thank you very much for your time, sir. I appreciate your efforts. You can certainly reach out to Caleb...
Appreciate everybody's time.
And they'll handle all the paperwork for you, as usual. Always a pleasure, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Take care. Thank you.
Okay, so hearing is adjourned. Thank you very much. Good luck, and you can be in touch with the permits, the building department. Okay, so folks, I apologize, you've been waiting patiently. We're just going to let them step down to the hallway, we'll get you going right away. So we'll let them clear out. I will begin to read our next application here. So this is a combo, actually. We have a 605 and a 610. They are regarding both the same place, map 23 parcel 71, on Byland Ave, number 31. We're going to obviously break it down and take it into each individual request as it is, but just so you understand that the 605 and the 610 are relatively connected. So with that being said, we have a 605 PM applicant, Bob Doolan, requesting a special, requesting a variance under section 5.4 of the urban zoning bylaw for demolition of an existing non-conforming single-family home to be replaced with a new single-family home located at 31 Byland Ave, map 23 parcel 71. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to open the hearing.
Second.
So Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo? You approve? I have to have an approval.
Yes, I second that.
I know, I apologize.
No problem.
Mr. Cusi?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
Approve.
I vote to approve. Okay, so hearing is open. Is the applicant present? Okay, sir, I'm going to yield the floor to you. If you could go ahead and describe what you'd like to do to the board, and then I'll let them turn it over for questions.
Sure. Peter Engel with McClure Engineering, on behalf of Robert Doolan, the applicant. The purpose of why we're in front of you is a two-step application of variance and a special permit for working the floodplain. The property is 31 Byland Ave, about Stoneville Reservoir. The existing home is non-conforming, it's a non-conforming lot. The existing home is non-conforming in terms of the front setback. It's also located in the floodplain. The applicant is wishing to demo the house, construct a new house, and keep that outside of the floodplain for flood insurance purposes. And so in doing that, maintaining that existing non-conforming setback to the street helps us stay as far from the lake as we can in the floodplain. So really, the variance is to keep us as far from the lake as we could possibly be. We wouldn't be encroaching further towards the street or worsening that non-conformity.
Okay, so that's the beginning, the end of the first part of the presentation here. I'm going to yield the floor to you, Vice Chair Maron. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for being here. So I did have an opportunity to view the property. So the structure that's on the property now is completely coming down.
Correct.
Everything is being removed. Just out of curiosity, looking at the property, there's a lot that is immediately on the left of the property. Is that part of the property?
Wooded area? Correct.
There's actually a small clearing before the wooded area.
Yep. Yeah, there's...
Is that in the same lot?
Yeah, so there's about 160 feet of frontage, so...
But that additional room doesn't buy you what you're looking for to get away from the variance, correct?
Correct. That whole area is under the floodplain.
And the sole reason to keep the, so the footprint of the new property, is it going to keep the same setback that you have now?
Correct. Yep, the same front setback.
And as you articulated, the primary reason...
It will move closer to the side setback, but it will conform with the side setback.
As you've articulated, the sole purpose to do that is to stay...
Correct. Yep. Yeah, we're going to have to work within the floodplain regardless. Keeping it out allows us to provide some compensatory storage. That applies, that is actually two sheets. Oh, gosh.
So while you're filling that up, does the property have water and sewer, town water and sewer?
It does.
Septic system in that area, which would make sense based on its proximity. Thank you very much. I'm going to reserve, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any additional questions right now.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Cusi, to you, sir?
Yeah, so this is in the floodplain?
Correct. About half the existing home is in, the garage is in the floodplain, or under the floodplain.
A lot of criteria to meet for a property in the floodplain. Do you meet all the criteria?
So the new home would be located outside of the floodplain. We would grade around the home to keep it above the floodplain, and then provide compensatory storage up in the front and on the side. And the storage that we provide is greater than what the existing flood volumes are now, so this does have to go to conservation, who would also have to look at that.
Close to the road are you?
23. Three and a half feet is the setback to the existing roof eve, I guess, and that would be the same that we're proposing to do.
Looking at the current house and the situation and the topology of your lot, I for one would go along with your request for a variance based on that topology, also based upon the fact that you're trying to get this in and not infringe on the floodplain, and you are, in your brief from McClure Engineering, it stated that's within 100-year special flood hazard zone. a hundred-year special flood hazard zone. In such a situation, a hundred years, I think the town would be okay within that. And I have no other questions or comments on your request for a variance.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Roach?
Um, no, I'm, I'm actually pretty good. I mean, it's exactly the same 23.5 as what they are now. So I really don't, yes, it needs our approval, of course, but I don't really have any issue with this. I mean, you still have to get through ConCon, but I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Do we have any abutters present that want to speak on this hearing? Sir, if you could, you'd have to approach the lectern, give us your name and address, and express your concerns.
Island 19 Byland Ave, I'm also a, an abutter and a precinct two town meeting member. We haven't had, I haven't heard any concerns about this from any of my constituents. I personally have no objection, I, I welcome this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. It's rare that we actually have somebody that would take time out of their day to come and actually say that they would approve it. So we really do appreciate that. It's usually somebody that comes in and has an opposition to something. So, thank you. Um, the only question I have is with the existing home, I know it's gonna be demolished, uh, there's not gonna be anything left in the ground behind, correct? No tanks? If there's an old oil tank, if there's an old septic tank, whatever it is, we're gonna clean all that up, right?
Correct.
That's, you know, I, our job is to protect as much of our water as we can. So with that being said, I'll go ahead one more time, yield to the Vice Chair. Any more thoughts, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any reservations. I agree with Mr. Chacolo and other board members. I, I, they're asking for relief that is already existing in a non-conforming structure now, um, and, um, that they're looking to make betterments. And also try to stay away from a little bit of flood insurance, which is probably not just a little bit, um, which I can absolutely respect. I don't have any concerns, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Cussy?
One more question.
I think you already stated, Mr. Chacolo, you had nothing further, correct? Ms. Roach, you as well? So, uh, if we have no other abutters, um, with that being said, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
I'll make that motion, Jim, close public portion of the hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Marin?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
I approve.
And I vote to approve, public portion of the hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion on the 605 applicant? Make sure I can see this here, I put the wrong glasses on, sorry. Okay, here we are. So, um, with that being said, do I have a motion on the 605 PM applicant, Bob Doolan, requesting a variance under section 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for demolition of an existing non-conforming single-family home to replace with a new single-family home located at 31 Byland Ave, map, map 23 parcel 71?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve as stated with standard conditions.
Excellent, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Marin?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
Um, I would approve, and I think just for minute purposes, I think we need to just specifically mention that we think that all four conditions that are required via variance have been met.
I would agree with that, correct. We have definitely met all required steps of the variance here. In this particular case, we have clearly met all four, actually. So thank you very much for that point of clarification, I appreciate it. And just for the record again, Mr. Garabedian, how do you feel, sir?
I would approve.
Thank you so much, okay. So with that being said, um, permit number one, Mr. Doolan, is complete. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to close this hearing, we're gonna go right to the 610 and we're gonna open that one. So with that being said, do I have a motion to close the 605 PM hearing? Am I, am I doing this correct? I think I might have, might have... No, we're right.
That's right.
To the chair, we just need a motion, the hearing's been voted on, we just need a motion to open that.
Right, correct, okay. So, so do I have a motion to open the 610 PM applicant, Bob Dooling? Bob Doolan, excuse me, requesting a special permit under 417 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for construction of a new single-family home within floodplain overlay district located at 31 Byland Ave, map 23 parcel 71. Do I have a motion to open?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open, the hearing is stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Marin?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
Approve.
I vote to approve. Okay, so, can we just go ahead and discuss briefly, um, although we've already covered it, for the record, what's going on here with this one?
Sure. Um, so, again, Peter Engel, McClure Engineering, um, trying to rebuild this house at 31 Byland Ave. Existing house, the garage is in the floodplain. The purpose is to move the house entirely out of the floodplain. There will be grading associated with that work to, uh, limit, or, or prevent the floodplain from touching the building, but also provide compensatory storage for the floodplain as to not affect the flooding of Stoneville Reservoir.
Excellent, thank you so much. Uh, do I have any questions?
Surprisingly, Mr. Chairman, I have no questions.
Mr. Cussy?
So our conservation committee, commission and everything's gonna be involved with this?
Uh, Caleb, to you, sir?
Yes, the conservation department would hear it.
Yeah, and the DEP, do they get involved?
They get copied on, yep. The DEP gets a chance to review the calculations and the plans. And as long as they're good with everything, Conservation's good with everything, we get an approval. And then, um, we have to provide FEMA with a certification of elevations showing that the building is not in the floodplain.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Chacolo?
No questions.
Okay, Ms. Roach? Uh, no, I mean, I, I think when this sort of situation, certainly enough checks along the road, that they have to make sure that this thing is going up the way, the way it should be, so...
Well, I agree. I, I have the confidence on other boards too that would, they're gonna vet this properly anyway. And again, I think as, as Mr. Vice Chair Marin mentioned, we're, they're taking down an old house and putting a new one in the exact same spot, and they're just gonna kind of clean the lot up, I think it's a win-win for everyone, so... With that being said, do I have a motion on the 610? Go ahead, sir.
I have a couple of questions for the applicant.
Okay, no, that's great, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so, actually, what's the flood elevation?
It is seven, or 57241.
And your new basement floor elevation?
It will be below that. Basement itself is 56977.
Inside of the floodplain?
Outside of the floodplain. So beyond, so, the finished grade along the house will be 573.
The house, the house itself is in, the first floor is above the flood elevation, but it is in the floodwater district.
House will be outside, so that line will change as we grade around the house. We're grading, we're grading so, as so water cannot reach the house.
FEMA approves that, Jim?
Correct. All they, all they require is the lowest adjacent grade to the house be higher than the floodplain. So if we had, if we had like a...
The building code says that the basement can't be below floodplain unless it's, it's got flood.
Right, but the way we have it, there's no way for the water to actually reach the house. So if we have like a walkout, you'd be correct, we, we wouldn't be able to do it.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Just so the board understands, that was tactical lingo between these guys over here, right? I'm kidding. So could you just, for the record, um, talk about who is the governing authority that would approve something like that, you said? You had mentioned that so-and-so approved that?
So what I was talking about is certain building code requirements where the lowest floor of the home can't be below the floodplain.
Right.
They're proposing to raise, raise the grade around the back of the house to potentially move the floodplain outside of, and I believe FEMA suggests that. And also DEP will have a chance to comment on the project.
Right, no, I just wanted to make sure that we understood all the agencies that were gonna be involved in this, that's what, kinda. First, this is a little joke. So with that being said, um, do we have any more questions or concerns of the applicant? Hearing none, seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You certainly may, I would actually like to hear from you, sir.
So, uh, I see that there's a proposed underground electrical utility connection. I forgive me for not knowing, but does the neighborhood currently have underground utilities or above ground, and how much of the street would need to pull, uh, be pulled up to put it under?
That's a good question. Can somebody answer that question? So, um...
I believe the question was whether the street would be disturbed, some connect utilities, but, um, handling or anything going on, but I believe the utilities on the site are ready to come in, if we just meant to...
Correct, yep.
I don't believe there'd be any disturbance in the right of way.
Did you hear that? So there would be no disturbance in the right of way whatsoever, it's because they're gonna just take the existing power and they're gonna tie it right into the other, the new house too.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
No, thank you, I appreciate that, that's the whole point, we're here to make sure that's all covered. Okay, so with that being said, um, anything else? All right, so, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close the public portion of the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Approve.
Um, Vice Chair Marin, how do you vote? Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote?
Approve. I put the horse before the cow.
That's okay. Mr. Cussy, how do you vote?
Approve.
Ms. Roach, how do you vote?
Approve.
I vote to approve. Um, so, okay, so that public portion of the hearing is closed. Do I have a motion on the 68 PM applicant, Bob Doolan, requesting a special permit under 4.1.7 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for construction of a new single-family home with a floodplain overlay district located at 31 Byland Ave, map 23 parcel 71?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with standard conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Marin?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Uh, Ms. Roach?
Approve.
I vote to approve. And just for the record, uh, Mr. Garabedian?
I'd approve.
Thank you very much. All right, so you're all set?
Thank you.
Those two are taken care of, good luck with the project, hope it goes well for you. And, uh, you can be in touch with the building department. So we're gonna, again, let this clear out and we'll get to, uh, what appears to be our final hearing this evening. Look at that, and then there was only a few left, huh? Like presence under the tree. Okay, so we have a 615 PM applicant, Daniel and Amanda McNeil, requesting a special permit under section 9.3.12 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an accessory apartment located at 11 Nancy Drive.
True.
Map 10 parcel 188. Is the applicant present? Thank you, sir, do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Have a second.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Marin?
I approve.
Uh, Mr. Cussy?
Approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
I approve.
And I vote to approve. So the hearing is open. Uh, if the applicant could approach the lectern, please, give us an overview of what you'd like to accomplish, and then I'll turn it over to the board or any of your abutters that might be present, and, uh, we can go from there. It's not that bad, we're, we're not, we're not too aggressive, so...
Okay. Getting nervous.
Good evening, how are you guys?
Good, yourself?
Thank you. Glad to hear it. All right, so what are we looking to do?
All right, uh, my name's Dan McNeil, I live at 11 Nancy Drive. Um, we are looking into adding a, uh, in-law apartment, um, to the side of our house. This is my father-in-law, uh, Dan McCurley. And so we'd be using that for, uh, my wife and I would be using that for, for them to be living, uh, in addition with us.
And what about the structure itself? What can you tell us about the, uh, the plans?
Uh, the plans are, um, it would go off, I guess, when you look to the, the side of it, to go to the other side of house in sort of like an L-shaped fashion, I guess. Um, it would still be within, um, the, the, um, uh, the, the distance of the correct widths between the, our, the abutters as well, so... We would also be, uh, there isn't an intention, I don't think, at this point to have any separate utilities, it would be shared utilities. Um, we also have town water and town sewer.
Okay. Uh, are there any abutters present that would like to discuss this matter? Hearing none, seeing none? I'm gonna yield the floor to you, Vice Chair Marin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thanks for being here, gentlemen. So, um, I did have an opportunity to view the property. Just orienting myself with it, so looking at your property, the driveway is on the left, correct? And so is this setback from the margin of the house where your driveway is? Is that where you're proposing this be built?
Uh, correct, yes, so the, the, it is taking up a portion of our existing driveway.
So is it meeting, it, it's, um, the rendering here shows it, I believe, sets back, so is it jogged back from the, the house line now?
Correct, so it is, it will be starting further back than where the current front of the house is now.
So it jogs back, takes the width of the driveway and then pushes back into the backyard?
Correct.
Um, what's the square footage of the proposed apartment?
Um, do you have this?
So the apartment is actually going to, um, uh, be part of what is the existing garage. So, you know, outside of that, I mean, it's, it's 42 by 20, that's 840 feet, but there will be a garage that is in that footprint.
Just interested in living, not that I'm not interested, but I'm just, um, curious for when I talk measurements on square footage for the apartment, just the living space, not the car?
Just the living space, so it'd be 840, minus, I have it written down, so, but it's, it's less than, uh, I think it's like 6, where the garage is.
11 by 80, so, use it.
Thank you. Mr. Chacolo?
Um, the subject matter that just came up, the square footage, the living area square footage. And it... I have a problem with it. Um, you're... You're saying that the lower portion would be garage area?
So... Just, yeah, one, one section of it would be a garage area. Um, I don't, I'm trying to look at the plans from here, just having a...
What is, um... So it, I see a bedroom upstairs.
Right, yeah, if you want me to, uh, I'll explain, I didn't know I needed more details on that. So, um, as far as the addition itself, on the first level, there would be a gar, a garage area. There would also be a sort of kitchenette area, a, um, bedroom, um, as well, and a bathroom. And then on the top floor, there'd be a smaller second level, that would be a, um, that would be a master suite.
That I don't have here.
This, this is the, this is the ground level, there'd be a garage under.
Yeah.
And a door to enter the kitchen here. This is our kitchen, this is the dining room and living room, and then this is the bedroom.
Do you have measurements on that? I'm sorry to shout, but do you have measurements on that that we can, based on living space? I mean, I just can't discern it from this.
I can't see the, um... The lower portion, I guess, is 840 square feet, and the upper portion is 510. I think that's reversed, square feet. Thank you, Caleb.
Through the chair, the apartment is, I believe the apartment is designed to be just on the ground floor.
Through the chair, the apartment is, I believe the apartment is designed to be just on the ground floor. Anything above is gonna be part of the single-family home that, that's already there.
So what is in the upper portion?
The upper portion master bedroom is gonna be part of the single-family house. When they add this apartment, correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
They're, when they're adding on to this, the, the, the plans that you see, they have the garage on it, and then it has the kitchen with the bedroom down and back. That's gonna be the in-law apartment only. So the 810 estimation on square feet is for the lower level. The master bedroom, they're adding upstairs.
Adding to the current master bedroom?
To their current home, so that will be a bedroom for the primary family who lives there, him and his wife, to use.
Thank you so much for that clarification.
It's a major clarification, I think, for us. It changes a lot of things.
No, it really does, you're right. No, 100%.
You don't allow two bedrooms.
The best way to understand this is to make sure that.
Accessories.
Yeah. Okay. It's a cool little endeavor, I like the way, I like the way it's thought out.
So that the up, the upper portion, which is estimated to be at, um, 840 square feet, is just, that is just the accessory apartment.
I think they said they, they switched, they flipped them on accident. It's 840 is the lower and 510 is the upper. So 510 is, square feet, is gonna be added to their single-family house via a master bedroom. And 840 is about the lower level, so.
So, uh, for our purposes here,
Eight forty is the lower.
We're gonna look at 840.
Correct. Correct.
But that, that includes the garage.
Right, and that's not living space.
So that's not really living space, correct?
That's correct.
So we could subtract from that 840.
Exactly, so, I think what I came up with.
Area, the size of the garage.
Through the chair, to, to the applicant. What is the size of the dining room and, the dining and living room area? There's no dimensions on that, that section of the apartment.
So, the living, the living, uh, room area is gonna be the existing garage.
Yeah, so what size is that?
That is 30 or 23 by 12, I, I believe.
That's both the, the entire garage is 23 by 12?
The new garage is 11 and, about approximately 11 and a half by.
No, we're looking at the existing garage. That's gonna become part of the apartment.
I don't, I'm not sure that was met on our sheets. I don't think I have the exact amount.
And just while they're calculating all this stuff, just to go over for the other, um, concerns that we generally come up with, um, this proposed addition meets all required setbacks, correct?
Correct.
Right, okay. I did wanna make sure that was understood too, sir. Not gonna really change the setbacks, not gonna affect the neighbors, per se.
Right. In a single bay, it's probably 12 by 24.
One of the questions, if I might, for the applicant.
Gentlemen? Uh, we have a board member with a question, please?
Just one other question to confirm. So, the primary bedroom that's gonna be on the second floor is accessed only through the main second floor of the house?
Correct.
And, and just so you understand too, I want you to be aware that Ms. Roach has clarified, the upper bedroom is gonna remain only accessible by the main house.
I just asked that.
It will not be accessible via the apartment.
Yep. Good question, Mr. Chairman. If, Mr. Chacolo is still under, um, an investigation. Um, if I may, just jump back in.
Absolutely.
And the reason why, and you may already know this, sir, but the reason why we're, we're intent on just nailing down the square footage is because our bylaw for accessory apartment has a maximum amount. Um, are you aware of that?
Uh,
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, so you, so, so there's, there's a maximum amount. And if you would go over that, then the board would have to entertain an option to offer you relief, um, if it were approved. Um, if it goes over that square footage. So, I could, I, I still can't, minus the garage, I mean, I, I still can't nail down, um, specific measurements. But is it safe to say, as I'm not doing this camera-friendly, but this, this, and I apologize for the artwork, but this L shape.
Pretty much is it.
This, this L shape is your intended apartment, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, minus the garage, this is your living space.
Awesome.
And upstairs is a simple-minded sometimes. And then upstairs is essentially, um, going to be, in addition to this project, a, um, an addition, an addition to your existing home.
That's correct.
Where are the two, um, uh, for, uh, excuse me, the two locations for egress for this apartment that you're proposing?
How do you get in and out?
How do you get in and out? You need two separate exits.
Yep, so in the front, right, uh, beside the garage, is an entrance. Okay, that's where the, uh, the, uh, driveway is, garage. And then in the back, there is a slider. Supposed to be built, uh, right.
Thank you.
Past the kitchen area.
Says slider, you can.
Into the backyard.
I ruined my copy with my artwork.
With your drawing, yeah.
And so I can't see anything else.
You cull it that in.
No, thank you, thank you, sir, thank you very much.
That might be like a Banksy someday.
It's pretty good, it's a good thought, though, I really, I can get down with it.
Understood. So to, to, so, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I mean, to, to, um, clearly marked sections of egress, their intent is a single-level apartment.
Right.
Um, and I would venture to say, just based on the very rough math that I have, that I don't know that they're encroaching on, on 800 that had been previously.
No.
Mentioned, I don't think that.
I think they're down to the.
Through the, through the chair.
About the 600.
I was just gonna, yeah.
That's what I said, 620-ish.
You did, sir.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
The living area of the proposed apartment calculates to roughly 1100 square feet. Cause the addition is the apartment, but the, what's also part of the apartment is their existing garage now. That's what you're missing. That's 17 by 30.
Okay, understood, but, but I, I agree with you. So you're, you're taking this entire block, is that correct?
No.
Okay. Cause I was removing the block, the garage in consideration.
This is part of the apartment. This is what is their garage today.
The dining, living area.
Right, that's gonna become part of the apartment. So that's 500 square feet.
This is part of the apartment, not just the L.
But this is existing, the dining room and living room is existing right now.
Correct.
So now they're at 1100?
That's being generous.
Does this show as a slider?
That's not counting the bathroom. I calculated the bedroom and the kitchen. And then the dining and living. If their scale's correct.
So is, sir, is it in your, is your, your intent that the entire bottom floor less the garage, the new proposed garage space? The entire bottom floor is the apartment? And.
Yes.
We hold that the entire bottom floor.
The existing garage is also gonna be part of the, the new living space.
With that information. 11.
That's correct.
Chair, I have a couple other questions on portions of the existing home. So, when you walk in your front door, currently there's a room to the left. Is that gonna remain part of the home, or is that part of the apartment?
That would be part of the main home.
Um, and then, in, what is, today, your garage, you're proposing your living room has a door into the right side of your existing home. That space is finished. Or at least, you're taxed as a new tenant.
Correct.
Is that existing home, or is that proposed apartment?
I'm talking about.
On the first floor, and I'm sorry to interrupt you.
This, this is the existing home.
Okay.
And this is our living space.
This here?
Yes, and there's a door from the apartment into that living space. And how would you access that living space from the single-family home?
Which living space, just to be clear?
The living space in your current basement, on the right, if you're facing your home to the right side of your basement, you're gonna have a door from your apartment into that space. But how you get into that space from here?
Um, from the entryway and the front door, you can turn right into that space.
You're not showing, the plan doesn't show the floor, that's why.
It's just open.
Oh, there's, there's no wall here?
Uh, there was a door, it's been removed. It was just open.
Yep, I was gonna say, now, I think, I would like to regroup the board.
Yes.
Um, and then.
By all means, Mr. Chairman.
Once we have decided that we're all comfortable with the knowledge, um, you know, I think, I think we need to have solid numbers, I think we need to have some plan clarifications, I'm just gonna propose that.
I, I, I think you're absolutely right, Mr. Chairman, because I, I go back and forth, I mean, I'm with my, yes, I understand.
Okay, so, we've had our, um, few minutes of fact-finding here, and what we're gonna do is kind of just reset everything. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and start over again with the, uh, newly gained information and hand it over to the vice chair. So, sir, now with all that additional information, what are you looking for?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, so one final, and forgive my crude, um, drawing. But what I originally understood was that this L portion was the apartment. Does the apartment also include this space right here?
Correct, yep. Yeah, sir, I didn't intend to, uh, misrepresent anything, we just.
I, I would not accuse you of that, I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Yep, that's correct, so yes, it would be that L shape plus the additional correction.
Okay, so that, so that clarity, so, thank, thank you, sir, very much. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll reserve, but I, I think, um, I think what, what I would lean into is, is even if we were to approach and, and, we don't need to question the numbers, but if we were to approach, um, numbers that, that approached there, then I think that there were far beyond, um, the intent of the accessory apartment.
I agree, and I, and again, I'm not necessarily, I'm not for or against the project, per se. I think it might be necessarily how the permit is worded and requested. Because at 1100 square feet, if the neighborhood supports it and it's allowed, um, a, a rewording of the documents might be appropriate. Um, if not, then compliance with the size is the other option. Right? That's how I see it.
Well said, Mr. Chairman, I agree.
So, um, any other concerns, sir?
Nothing.
All right, Mr. Cussy?
Nope. So we just allow 700 square feet, uh, and we're at 11. That's, that's, uh.
On the idea of accessory use apartment.
Correct.
If the, so, yeah, that's, that's really on the accessory apartment, so if they decided to, uh, reevaluate things, uh, again, that's what I was discussing with the vice chair, they could either try to reapply, or they could continue, or they could do whatever. Um, but, like you said, 1100 with a accessory use apartment, I don't think that is appropriate use of the bylaw at this time. Um, anyway, Mr. Chacolo, you have thoughts, sir?
As I'm looking down on this, I'm trying to find the setback. The side setback. On the side where the apartment is proposed to go.
On the left side of the property, Mr. Chacolo?
Yes, looking at it from the, the street, I guess, this area, Caleb.
While they're clarifying that, Ms. Roach, do you have any questions or concerns? Huh?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think, if you've ever seen any of our meetings, I think the 700 foot restriction.
I'm trying to figure it, but I don't see any.
Yeah, there should be a site plan.
As a board. Um, do we love it? No. Um, and there is some discussions in bylaw review.
Talking about this.
Eventually amending it. Um, we've given, we've certainly given some leeway, um, at 810, 840, you know, not to, to call out a specific number. Uh, necessarily, but.
This is Nancy, yes.
If it's within the plan, we have given some leeway. Um, but no one on this board gives 1100 as a leeway. That's just frankly too big. Um.
It is on here, Caleb.
Some options, like you said, possibly to change the way the permit is requested. Um, to try to make it more of a two-family. Um, but, you know, an in-law apartment doesn't typically contain living rooms, dining rooms, big, it's, it's an apartment. It's not a house. 1100 square feet is, is just too big, I think, for us.
Well, uh, the way the current bylaw is, it certainly is big for us.
Yeah, we, we really don't.
You know, if that was changed, we would have more leeway in it.
Yeah, and we give a little leeway, but.
Yeah, we do.
Not that much.
And again, like you said, it's, it's case by case. I think the issue too is, um, not having a complete clarification on what we have for square footage in terms of living space versus garage space. There's a setback issue that Mr. Chacolo has identified that he's not really sure about, they're still working on right now. And then, uh, the, um, Department of Inspectual Services had some plan layout concerns. So I think with all those things being said, so we're.
Yep.
Um, it might behoove the applicant to request a continuation as just discussing between.
Setback from the.
As the chair and the board. And then they can determine what the best course of action would be through, um, guidance with the Department of Inspectual Services. And they can either come back with a modified set of plans or a modified application, that would be my proposal. Then we can get the things clarified that we need. Um, and they can determine the best course of way, action financially and what they wanna do as well. I think that would probably be the best route right now.
Yeah, I, I agree, Mr. Chairman, I, I think the, the criticism we would wanna extend is that, um, we're certainly open-minded and not opposed to entertain it. Uh, but it encroaches on a number that, um, that's a challenge for us with our current bylaw. And so, um, we would, I would certainly advise, um, the applicant to, to think about, uh, because it, if, if, if the applicant certainly has the option to ask us to take a vote this evening. Uh, but I think that, you know, just based on looking at the open discussion that we've had, um, um, you can probably glean into, into what way the board leans. So, having said that, we would wanna give you every opportunity to, to rethink the project and be successful.
Yeah, I just have, uh, a question, a clarification on the, the accessory apartment square footage. Um, so, the accessory apartment is separate from what's going on upstairs, correct?
Correct.
So, if we have a footprint of 42 by 20, that's 840 square feet. Uh, that's the new footprint. We're, we're, so, the part of the living space is in the existing footprint. Okay, so that's gonna be our living, uh, living dining room area. So is that square footage part of, oh.
It is, just because it's pre-existing doesn't mean it's not. As long as it's accessible from the apartment, it's considered part of your square footage.
We gotta take, you gotta, you gotta basically draw a line where it's gonna be. And you're gonna have to decide that the main house is X amount of square feet, and the accessory use apartment is X amount of square feet. And that's really how we have to decide it. You know, based on how you commit with the plan. Um, again, this bylaw was written, you know, 20 or 30 years ago, when houses weren't really that particularly big. Or, um, people weren't really interested in doing additions that big, either. Uh, and we have faced with trying to modify that now, we've been working on it for quite a while. Uh, we don't know where it is in, in terms of, you know, uh, down the road, but it's not gonna, obviously, we can't do much with it, it's not gonna affect your outcome. So, I think what we had discussed here is that we saw some point of clarifications we had. Uh, we were concerned about what exactly is gonna be the square feet in the main home, what's gonna exactly be the square footage of living space in the accessory use apartment. If it still meets the guidelines for accessory use apartment, it would be advised, will it come back with the permit or the application as such? If it would be better suited for your neighborhood and the lot, so to speak, or the, um, situation to be considered a two-family home, it might be better to modify and go that route. Um, and then you have a permanent two-family home with two larger apartments, so to speak, under one roof rather than a main home and an accessory use apartment. So there's a couple of different ways to approach it, is what we're trying to get at. Um, I think tonight, the board, I can say, I think, I don't like to speak on behalf of the board, but I think we do not feel comfortable enough with the information that we have before us to make a decision this evening on this. We would like to get the concerns and questions we have addressed, have you come back? Um, or, so in other words, you can either request a continuation, that is your prerogative, or you could ask the board to take a vote tonight on the plans as is. But I think you might know the outcome of that, just based on how we feel. Um, but if you request a continuation, uh, and the board agrees to it, you can come back next month, fresh set of plans, fresh set of ideas, all the square footage, everything laid out. And if the board so sees fit, it can move forward, or at least we can move forward in terms of what your project desire is, and try to get you to where you wanna be. So, I mean, we, we definitely don't wanna prevent people from doing this stuff, we wanna help you from doing it. We wanna make sure you get all your ducks in line, make sure it complies to all of our bylaws, make sure it doesn't upset the neighborhood. You know, all these things have to kind of fall into balance. So, I think if the members of the board are, would agree, I think, would that be the best course of action moving forward, you think?
Yeah, I mean, in the past, we've allowed some square footage of over 700, you know, not 400. You know. We're flexible a bit, but not that we can't go, we've never gone that far, so that's. Right. You could shrink it down.
Honestly, I thought that the existing.
Yeah, wouldn't count.
Would not count towards that in taking off, you know, from the 840 square feet and then taking off the, uh, the planned, planned garage, that would be well inside that.
And we also recognize plans are expensive, you know, we try to, you know, keep it so that you're not frivolously spending, um. You know, we try to, you know, keep it so that you're not frivolously spending, um-
Yeah, we don't want to cost any additional money either. We just have to make sure it's right and-
Right. We also just, before, we don't love dining room being crossed out and being called storage. Get that out on the table now. Before you spend any additional money on new plans. Um, but if you request a continuance, you know, you certainly can have a chance for your work or some things.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, add my, my typical disclaimer.
Yes, please.
And so, um, we, you know, we're not, not the board's authority or position to advise on what would be successful in the future for any applicant.
No, you're right. That, that does not guarantee a successful outcome of the application.
Thank, thank you, sir. They're, they're far better articulated. However, um, having said that, um, you know, the thoughtful comments of the applicant, I don't think that there's anything mischievous on their presentation this evening. I don't think that they came in and tried to say, don't look at over there, it's only eight hundred. I don't think that there was any intent. I think that, I think that it was truly, um, a misunderstanding of, of the use of the space. Um, and so I would, I would absolutely be in, in, I would be in favor of, as you outline, their options. Um, I would personally like to see, uh, the applicant, um, step away and request a continuance and rethink this application.
And, you know, well said. And also, I think that, you know, we struggle, as you've seen, we have hours upon hours of documentation of interpreting bylaws right in this very room. So for somebody who's not as familiar with it to come in and try to figure it out too.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, of course, mistakes are made.
Absolutely.
So with that being said, um, does the applicant have anything they'd like to add to the, uh, to the meeting this evening?
I don't.
Yeah, no, I think, I think, um, yeah, I think we're on board with requesting a continuance.
Okay, so-
And I think we're going to come back, uh, with more in detailed information in terms of what the living spaces would be and our options.
Yep, okay. So with that being said, just for the record for the board, the applicant has formally requested a continuation. Um, do I have a motion to accept the applicant's request for continuation?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the applicant's request for a continuation.
Second.
Mr. Chacolo, you second, Mr. Uh, so vice chair?
I approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Prove.
Mr. Cussy?
Prove.
Ms. Roach?
I approve.
And I vote to approve. Um, and I, I'm pretty certain that our, uh, esteemed colleague over here patiently waiting behind us, Mr. Garabedian, would you approve, sir?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, so with that being said, I think you got a, you know, good idea what we're looking for, um, the pretty good checklist. If you have any questions, please feel free. Caleb's great to reach out, one of him, him or one of the other representatives of the department are always going to be willing to help you. And, uh, you know, Merry Christmas and hopefully we see you in January.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right. I don't believe we have any new business. Yep, we have no new business, surprisingly. We have no meetings to approve. We're in pretty good shape, very happy to hear that. So with that being said, do we have a motion to, I want to make sure, we closed the six fifteen, correct? No, we need to close the six fifteen. All right, so I have no motion to close the six fifteen PM hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, we won't close it because we voted to continue.
Ha. So my disclaimer on this, so this meeting has been continued, which means the hearing remains open, which means anybody that is watching this at home or is interested in expressing a concern, a comment, or anything like that, they could, they can, uh, contact the Department of Inspeccional Services and do so. Otherwise, this will remain open until our next meeting, which is January nineteenth at six PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Vice Chairman Aaron?
I approve.
Ms. Chacolo?
Prove.
Ms. Cussy?
Prove.
Ms. Roach?
I approve.
I vote to approve. And Mr. Garabedian?
I approve.
Excellent. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, uh, everyone, thank you very much for coming and we'll see you next month.